I'd like to call to order the January 10th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. As the Secretary of the Call, the role please.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Grot.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Luray.
Here.
Mr. Appone and Mr. Meredith were absent this evening. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. The first item is approval of the agenda, and there is one correction, or one subtraction that the site plan number 21-20 for Antoinette DiLorenzo, per the request of the applicant, has pulled their petition, so we won't be addressing that one, that item. And they'll have to resubmit and come back at a later time if they choose to. With that correction, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So I move.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is approval of minutes from the December 13th meeting.
So move.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four items this evening, three site plans, and a public hearing regarding a series of text ordinance amendments. The first item, site plan number 22-01, Alex Shenea for Game On Burgers. Is the representative for...
Yeah, Mark Bria, Attorney Representative.
You need to come on up. Name and address, and then what are your requests? What's your client requesting from this?
My name's Mark Bria. I'm the Attorney Representative of Game On Burgers from O'Reilly Rancilio, and we are just requesting the approval of the site plan in order to place an outdoor patio outside of Game On Burgers Restaurant.
Okay, how about an address, please?
Oh, so the address for Game On...
You, your address.
Oh, okay. 10880 Eddington Street, Livonia, Michigan, 48150.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, granted, your client has a site plan, that what are they requesting?
So they're requesting the approval to build, to pour concrete into the parking lot, to take up two of the parking spots, and to create an outdoor patio dining area for the restaurant outside to kind of extend their amount of seating capacity, and to, again, kind of permit the outdoor seating at the restaurant.
Okay. Now, there's also a hookah business. Is this your honor, your client owned both establishments?
Correct.
Okay. Actually, I'm going to call on the planner to offer some comments regarding that specifically.
Thank you, Chairman Moffett. So, as the representative stated, they're adding an outdoor patio, and with the COVID-19, we've seen more and more businesses request this type of outdoor patio and seating to accommodate their patrons. With this, they are removing two spots from the site, but it's not going to affect their parking requirements. They still adhere to that. With that being said, we're going to have to take these two items separately with the hookah lounge and the Game On Burger. The hookah lounge, there's no, per our township ordinance, there's no outdoor smoking permitted for hookah lounges, so we need to be sure that the applicant understands this because there has been violations in the past with patrons using the hookah, the Game On Burgers patio to smoke hookah. So please understand that that can't be done. It violates the state requirements and also the township ordinance, and we have to keep these separate. With that being said, there's also no outdoor entertainment music or speakers permitted on the patio as well, and there's some minor site plan review comments that need to be addressed, and also state on the site plan that the patio will only be used for the Game On Burgers and not the Game On Hookah.
Okay. Are you, do you believe your client will abide by that?
Yes, absolutely, and I think the big concern that the planning commissioner brought up, and that kind of talked with both her in the past as well as with the client, is the whole point of their goal to get this extra outdoor patio is to help differentiate the two places. Obviously, there's no smoking outside the one, but to have its own patio just simply affiliated with the restaurant itself kind of helps to distinguish between the two properties. And in terms of it, I'm only working with them in relation to the restaurant, so I can't speak to the hookah lounge as a whole, but it is something that I have addressed with them.
Okay.
Almost ad nauseam at this, to kind of make sure the city's reservations and kind of concerns are met and that they're fully addressed with everything.
Okay. She's the planning director at a much higher pay grade and competence level than the rest of it, but just for that. I guess, you know, I feel strongly enough that I'll ask the maker of the motion to at least reflect that if there is a violation, that this approval is then rescinded.
Yes.
And so if you can, you know, if that were the case, you know, that's how serious we'll take that.
Yes, definitely.
Because it's always hard, it's difficult to enforce, but if we do catch you, catch them, you know, that the ramifications will be, will be large, so.
Yes, and that's one that I discussed with them, that this was to be taken very seriously with it to follow all the requirements.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any questions?
And Mr. Turner?
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Bria, do you know if they were using the outside area that they wanted to have for the patio as a quasi patio already?
Yes, they were. So it's on the spot of the two parking spots already, just with some informal tables and chairs placed there, and the big issue with that is it's kind of at the sunken part of the parking lot, so any kind of rain or just kind of inclement weather effectively kind of removed their ability to use that as a whole. So I think it's first and foremost kind of the ability to use it, but then also I think it just looks a lot more professional and just more welcoming to kind of guests if you have it, kind of a fully poured patio as well as a nice gate and fence around it. So yes, it was being used for it, but the whole goal with this one is to
Right.
Kind of ensure it's continued.
I thought so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Turner, if I, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I may add, so we allowed businesses during the COVID pandemic to apply for temporary use permits for these outdoor patios, so it was sort of a makeshift in the, in the parking lot, and we knew at that time when we allowed for this temporary use that Mr. Shenea, his client, was going to be applying for a more permanent structure.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll
entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I'll move to approve site plan number 22-01 for Alex Shunea for Game On Burgers, 45849 Mound Road, located north of West Utica Road, west of Mound Road. East of Mound, I think, east of Mound Road, proposing an outdoor patio.
Oh, it's west.
It's west.
Oh, it is west, you're right. My bad. West of Mound Road, proposing an outdoor patio for outdoor dining, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comments. If there is a violation of the ordinance regarding smoking on the outside, this approval will be rescinded.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Luray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Grot.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Chair of the House, yes. Good luck to your client.
Thank you very much.
I'm just trying to get the PowerPoint up here. Okay, should I take this off, is it easier?
Uh, just keep it on, I guess.
Okay. All right, good evening.
In front of the microphone, that would be helpful.
Good evening. My name is Steve Cross. I'm Costco's Development Manager for this project. My address is 1955 Raymond Drive, Suite 119 in Northbrook, Illinois. So here tonight, I'm seeking the final site plan approval for a expansion to the Costco facility at 45460 Market Street. So we're looking for approval for a parking lot expansion and a car wash. And should be noted that this will be the first one in the Midwest if we receive approval here. The car washes are generally on the West Coast, so this is their foray into the Midwest here. The property is located at the northeast corner of Hall and Market Street. It's about almost 15 acres in size, the existing warehouse site, so we're looking to acquire about 3.6 acres on the north end of the site. So if you look at the, the site plan over there, the blue area is the 15 acres of the existing Costco. So what we're looking at is 3.6 acres of vacant land on the north side of the, of the existing warehouse there. The property is part of the Market Street Town Center development with mixed retail, located on the west side of the, of Market Street. We have the Meyer and residential on the east side, and then we have the vacant land to the north. The warehouse was opened in, in 2001, and the fuel station was completed and opened in about 2011. We currently have 665 parking spaces on site. That's considered underparked now, considering where the warehouse is at, even though it's slightly smaller than the current warehouses being constructed by about 10,000 square feet. We're typically looking for 800 to 850 parking stalls for any new warehouses that are coming online. So this site has been very successful. Significant number of members here, obviously, if you go to it, you'll notice that. So we want to do everything we can to continue to make this location viable and provide for the members' needs with additional parking and the fuel, the car wash. During a meeting in October, the car wash was determined to be an accessory, permitted use. So tonight, as I mentioned, we're seeking final, final site plan approval so that we can proceed with a building permit submittal and hope to start construction in April of this year. So let me just go to... So this is a, north is up on this drawing here. So this is the site plan that shows the 3.6 acres is the heavy boundary there. You can just see the warehouse just at the bottom of the page there. The car wash is located at the, at the northeast corner of the site with the expansion parking area on the west side of the site, and a little bit is in between the fuel and the car wash area. The car wash is a conveyor belt system, so all activities for the car wash happen inside the building. Members will line up along the north side of the car wash, heading westbound, do a 180-degree turn, and enter the, the car wash system, and run through the conveyor belt system there and exit on the east end. So everything happens inside. There's no other services, there's no drying, there's no other facilities that happen outside of this. We had designed the layout to facilitate movement between the warehouse, the fuel, and the car wash, so we're trying to keep them all kind of actively working together. We have about 30-plus parking stacking area along the north side of the, of the car wash there, and then coming around the corner so we can get at least 30 cars stacked up. And there's also an escape lane provided at the end of the, at the end of the actual turn, so that anybody who changes their mind or people who aren't members, they can get out of line without going through the car wash. The parking expansion will add about 159 new stalls, so we'll end up with about 824, so that's in that sweet spot between the 800 to 850 for new warehouses. And what we'll do is employees right now are directed to park down at the south end of the parking lot on Hall Street. Obviously, these spaces at the back of the building are less desirable, so we'll move the employee parking to the north side of the building, free up spaces in front of the warehouse. We are going to provide some substantial screening along the east side of the site. We have a 50-foot setback to the parking. We're going to provide a fence along there and landscaping up against the residential. And then the seller, the property seller has also asked us to provide heavy landscaping along the north property line for whatever that future use becomes there, so we're providing that. Staff has actually asked us to consider a vinyl-type fence, a stone fence, instead of the wood fence that we proposed, and we're certainly open to that. As part of our final application, we can, we can change the fence material to what staff is recommending. We have modified the site lighting from a 30-foot pole down to a 20-foot pole, which is what is allowed, so we comply with the photometrics and the pole height. And the building itself is a 2,500-square-foot, single-story masonry building with the pre-finished textured metal panels, which are really the only place that, it's like right behind the sign, so the Costco sign is on top of that. And it sort of mimics the sign on the main warehouse, where I think that's Eiffel up there, but obviously this is a more modern, better material than, than putting that on there. The overall look is to mimic the existing warehouse. All roof-mounted equipment will be screened, and the building will have the red banding, the Costco banding, and the Costco signage. Staff saw the comment was about tree removal, and we just need to clearly delineate the trees that are going to be removed in that area. So with that, I'll be available for any questions you might have.
I didn't have any questions until you told, you said something that paused me, gave me pause. You said there's an escape, so if somebody decides they're not, determined they're not a member, that they can leave without getting their car washed, but wouldn't they have to already go through and pay before they got to that point?
No, they would actually, the Costco attendant would probably let them through.
Let them go in and out.
Yeah, he's not going to make them pay to go through to the exit.
Well, I just, okay.
But that's a good question.
Fair enough. Yeah, the rest of it's, to the planner.
So most of those site plan comments that you see in, in your report are, have already been addressed. They, originally, they had metal panels on the building, and they upgraded them all to stone and brick veneer to match the existing warehouse on all four elevations. And like Mr. Cross said, they are, you know, they don't have any problems providing that stone look fence along that property line where they about the residential to the east. So other than that, I don't have any issues with, with the site plan. They've, they've covered all those comments.
Okay. To the board, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question. On the traffic circulation, getting in and out of there. I know I'm in there on the weekends, and the gas is bad. How would they go around to get in? Would they go behind where the gas isn't in that way? Is that the traffic circulation concept that you're looking at?
The, what they would do is, we actually had, as you came through the fuel, there's an island right in front of you, which has the controller cabinet. Right now, the fuel, when you, when you exit the fuel, you make a left-hand turn, and you kind of come out of the corner by the loading area. We actually did show a gap between the controller and the property line to the right to allow people to go straight through. However, that's, that's what's on the plan right now, but in retrospect, when we looked at it the other day, we said, well, that's going to create confusion with people trying to crisscross. So what we're going to do is just keep that closed off, so all of the fuel exiting will exit like it does to the left, and then they'll make a right-hand turn and end up in the entry into the car wash. So it should be fairly simplified at that point.
Now, they could, they could also access from, from Lake Side Boulevard. They could come behind this, behind the store.
That's correct, yeah, from Market Street, you're saying, and behind the store and just go straight into the fuel. Some people may want to go to the car wash first and then the fuel, others may go fuel the car wash, you know, depends on how people
Right.
Receive the shortest line, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve site plan number 21-40 for Stephen Cross for Costco Wholesale Corporation for a car wash at 45460 Market Street, part of parcel number 23-07-36-400-072, located north of Hall Road and east of Market Street, subject to the submission of seven sets of revised site plans addressing all department comments.
Support. It's been moved by Moore, support by Snyder. There goes another tree, another forest of trees, given all the paper.
There's not too many there.
But, no. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Grot.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Luray.
Yes.
Chair of the House, yes. Good luck to you and your client.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next item, site plan number 21-41, Jacob Miller for Speedway LLC.
Good evening. My name is Mandy Goss. I'm with CESO, the engineer on the project. Address 13060 South US Highway 27, Duette, Michigan, 48820. Thank you for having us here tonight. Oh, sorry, these masks, I appreciate the time to go through this project. We're looking to put up a new construction for a Speedway gas station. It'd be located at the southeast corner of Mound Road and 23 Mile Road. There's currently a six-acre parcel there that's going to be subdivided into three parcels. Speedway would have about 3.4 acres, and that does include the rightway in that area. The parcel overall is about five acres outside of the rightway, just to kind of give you that difference of what's in rightway and outside of rightway. It is adjacent to the, just north of the Amazon facilities there. So what we'd be proposing is a 4608 square foot convenience store with nine fueling dispensers. So that would actually give you 18 fueling positions, because you could fuel on either side of that. We would have a full access drive off of Mound Road with a right turn deceleration lane into the site, and a full access drive off 23 Mile Road with a full deceleration lane into the site as well. Those drives have already been, we've already submitted the traffic study to the county, and they are okay with both those locations of the drives with the addition of the acceleration, deceleration lanes. So that has already gone through them. The driveway on 23 Mile and Mound would be a shared driveway for the additional two develop, two parcels that are going to be developed in the future by the seller. I don't, no idea what's going there. So the seller is going to retain the additional parcels adjacent to the Speedway site. So as you can see, we kind of plan, the road here will not go in at this time. That's just kind of a, a guide of what they're, I think what they're proposing. We will install the area in the darker shading gray in order to have full access on our site, and then they'll expand later and come back in front of the planning commission for something in the future on those parcels. But there is already going to be a cross-access easement in place so that they can utilize the access drives that are being proposed on the Speedway site. With this development, we are proposing 56 parking spaces. I know the code required 65. We're already submitted for a variance for the reduction in parking. 65 is quite a lot for a development of this size. We submitted a parking study as well with the ZBA submittal, and on average, a site like this with, it includes, the parking spaces include the fueling dispenser spaces, just to kind of point that out. A site like this is usually 50 to 53 during peak hours. That's like the worst time of the day. And we submitted that support document for the ZBA in support of reducing some of the spaces. So obviously, you don't, less asphalt the better, I think, from a lot of people's standpoint. So we feel that what we are proposing will more than adequately support the site. The building, what is being proposed is a quick brick, a quick brick building, and they're with the full-height canopy columns, quick brick canopy columns on site. The canopy is not attached to the building. I know that was one of the items commented on in the planning review. If you, honestly, if you attach it, it makes the structure just look a lot more, I don't know what the right word is, it overtakes the site, I guess. It, it takes away from the actual aesthetics of the site with the hip roof and then the entrance. It definitely, the canopy looks bigger than the building. I don't know if that makes sense. So we prefer not to do the connected, plus it causes more issues with structural maintenance, connecting the building. You have two structures that move differently. It's more of a maintenance issue as well by connecting the canopy to the building itself. So we prefer to keep the canopy structure separate from the building structure for those reasons. And as you can see from the side view, if we did have to connect it, you would have a, just a single walkway to the building front doors, and again, it does take away from the aesthetics of the overall site. As you can see, we have a dumpster and enclosure off to the side that also has a storage shed behind it for the recycling, so it does help keep all of the debris on site maintained in a stored area. It has a double-wide storage shed. We did submit a variance for signage as well, just so you guys are aware of that, because I know we do have, what we're showing you guys currently has too much signage per your code. So that will be in front of the ZBA next month as well. Just to kind of show you the landscaping, we are proposing some berming along the roadway, and then a pond in the rear of our site. The pond will then drain to the south. There's a storm drainage easement that runs along the front of the Amazon site. With this site too, just so you're aware, the road commission is requiring us to dedicate some additional rightway so that we align with, I know the Amazon, the rightway jogs, you can kind of see, this would be the new proposed rightway. It currently lies out here. So we would be dedicating that additional rightway here, and then again along, probably feels better on the site plan, go back here real quick. You can see the old rightway line right here, and we'll be aligning that so that it all lines up with the additional rightway on the Amazon parcel that's already dedicated. So it'll clean up that intersection. All the rightway will be in order. It also has the new sidewalk installation, seven-foot wide sidewalks, one foot off of the rightway there as well. I think if there's anything else, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and...
Thank you. It looks like there's, is that like a propane, is there some kind of, let's see, 8,000 gallon?
Right here. Those are the underground fueling tanks.
Okay, so that's underground, there's nothing.
Yep, it's all underground.
Oh, that's all underground. That's angled. My question, if that were above, you know, its orientation might be affected by, once the other buildings come in, but if that's underground.
And the reason for the angle is so the fueling tank can pull in and sit off to the side without blocking the pathway vehicles.
Long as it's not visible, yeah, you can put them upside down. All right, thank you. To the planner.
Thank you, Chairman. So one question I had for you, Ms. Goss, is we didn't see on the site plan propane chest or ice chest. Is that going to be on the site?
Yes. As you, there's a couple smaller boxes up here on the front that show the ice and propane, and you can also see them here on the elevation, or the elevation of these. There's two ice chests, and then there's one propane on the corner here, and one on the side. So there's two, there's one on the front corner, one on the side corner.
Okay, so per our ordinance, you're allowed one, one propane cage and one, and one ice chest, so just FYI.
We can go ahead and modify that. Yep.
There's a question on the engineering comment as far as the D cell lane at Mound Road approach. Should it be extended to meet the Macomb County Department of Roads standards? I know, I know that you guys have been in contact with them as well.
Correct. And what you see on the site plan, it was just, the more recent submitted site plan does meet those standards.
Exactly. So a site, a preliminary review was done on this site plan, so most of these items have been addressed. They have applied for variances, the two variances that they need. And matter of fact, just a note, part of our zoning ordinance text amendments is going to cover the parking requirements for gas stations as part of this, these amendments. But it's not going to be done until after, so I don't have any comments. The site plan complies, other than those two variances, complies with our township ordinance.
Okay, thank you. One of, one of my more recent gripes has been the parking that's, you know, that, that Amazon has used that outlaw, that lot for storage and parking, and I just wanted some assurance, and I was told that once this proposal came in, that we would no longer allow for any other storage, and now to hear that there are two, you know, that only a third of it or a half of it's going to be developed, and there's still going to be that space, do we have some assurances from the developer that...
I could check with the seller. I don't represent the seller, so I can't speak on their behalf, but...
Yes, I'm, I'm looking more to the person that's going to enforce it than I'm going to call and yell at when I see a crack. So, so we, we're good now?
Yes. Yes, we're good.
All right.
I mean, I, I don't think there's any additional need for temporary...
I got your, I got your, I got your number, remember.
Yes.
Okay. To the board, are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve site plan number 21-41, Jacob Miller for Speedway LLC, 50500 Mound Road, located south of 23 Mile Road, east of Mound Road. Proposed gas station, subject to the submission of seven sets of revised site plans addressing all departmental comments and approval of the requested variances.
Support. Moved by Turner, support by Snyder. Are there any questions on that motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Grot.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Luray.
Yes.
Chair of the House, yes. Good luck to your client.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next item is a public hearing regarding zoning ordinance text amendments. First, let me announce that there was, and one item that was listed in error, and that was number 4.60 regarding animals, which would have increased the number of dogs that may be allowed for domestic purposes from two to four. That is not, it will not be changed. I know there were a number of folks that had sent letters. Number, so the item number 4.60 that increases the number of dogs in the residential from two to four is not being altered, is not being, there's not being proposed to change. Two is the limit.
No, three is the limit, and that's, yeah, we amended the ordinance after that, Mr., yeah, probably three years ago, I think it was. So the limit is three, and that coincides with the Macomb County ordinance on the keeping of dogs for residential properties.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll ask the Secretary to read the notices published. With that, I'll ask the secretary to read the notices published. Baby.
Well? Oh, it's down there.
It's noon in the air.
Planning Commission, Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, fifty-two-seven-hundred Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, five-eight-six-seven-two-six-seven-two-four-three, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on these proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from eight-thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-ten of two thousand and six as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary.
Thank you. Uh, so...
Oh, Mr. Chair? Pardon me, I, I needed to just clarify this. Also, the publication date was December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, and was published in the Shelby Utica News.
Thank you. Okay, by you, Mr. Kirk?
That's very good.
Thank you. Before I ask the planner to offer her, her comments on, on what she's proposing, as a matter of procedure, there are a, a number, a whole litany of, of, of changes to existing ordinances. I'd like to take those kind of as a block, and then there are a number of, it's sort of individual brand, new ordinances, and so when we make our, and again, we will make a recommendation to, ultimately to the township board that's going to make the final decision on this, that we'll look at those five items individually. And so there'll be one large group of the amendments, and then the rest of those individually.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moffett. So, most of these ordinance are housekeeping items or perfecting the ordinance. One of them, just a, just a name, is like the covered logias or patios that are now popular. Typically, we allow uncovered decks or patios to encroach fifteen feet into the rear yard setback. This would allow for a covered patio or logia to encroach fifteen feet into the rear yard setback without having to seek a variance for that particular one. Another one would be as the Speedway gas station, you know, parking, typically, we didn't count the parking spaces under the canopy or the gas pumps as part of the parking requirement for gas stations. This would include that, so that would, in this case, it would have negated the Speedway variance if, if we should have this ordinance in place. So, most of these items would take care of, you know, tho- those kinds of things. There's modifications to the drive-through requirements in O-one and C-one. Typically, we would, we, if we had, you know, drive-throughs, like for smoothie places have become popular, where we would allow those in a C-one district, so, that's one. Eliminating the special lane use requirement for churches in non-residential districts, while we have quite a number of churches in residential districts, so, they're all over, you know, they're all over, so that would, that would take care of that. One thing we discussed, too, as far as traffic impact studies and development impact studies, while the township anymore doesn't have any more property, that is large expanses that would require traffic impact studies or development, development impact studies, so I would leave that up to the Planning Commission if we want to completely eliminate that or keep it under a discretionary requirement. So, per the building department, they had also requested that in-ground swimming pools and observe a setback of ten feet from the rear inside property align, lines to allow for proper drainage. So there's, these, these, all these little things that we've come across that we think that we need to, you know, address in the zoning ordinance to make everybody's jobs easier and, and make more sense overall. So those are some of the ones, and then miscellaneous amendments, add portable on-demand pods as part of temporary uses for those structures. Obviously, you know, somebody's remodeling, they have those pods in their front yard to allow for those on a temporary basis, and then some minor corrections throughout the ordinance that we've identified. And then the new ordinance include artificial turf, beekeeping, donation bins, food trucks, and special land use, and other discretionary land use approvals. So basically, that artificial turf, as you know, came in front of the Township Zoning Board of Appeals a couple of times. We typically do, we have not been able to locate an ordinance on artificial turf in the state of Michigan, and I know that artificial turf is popular in the West, and it's, the weather conditions are conducive in the West for these artificial turf, you know, products, but I, I don't think that they are real well in, in our climate. Beekeeping, we've had a number of those in front of the township ordinance, in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals on that. I think those are pretty, pretty minor. Donation bins, Mr. Kirk can speak on that. Originally, we were not able to regulate those, as they were considered charitable donation items, but recently, they have decided that we can, so, being that a lot of those bins are overflowing, we just want to make sure that they're located in a proper location, and they're not overflowing or unkept. As far as food trucks go, as we know, the, they have become very popular, and we want to be sure that we have an ordinance on that. Now, all these are pretty comprehensive, and I'm sure down the line, we'll maybe have to tweak them, tweak the ordinances again, you know, as we, as we utilize these, but for the most part, that's what, what this whole slew of ordinance is about.
We'll start with the, the board. Does, does anyone on the commission have any questions for the planner on any of these So the, the church, so it eliminates the need for special land use in a, in a, in a commercial setting, or a light manufacturing setting. It's like, so like, some of these, the, and I, there's a church at, what, there's one at Twenty-four and, and Shelby at the old Farmer Jack's.
Correct.
So that, we had required a special land use to go in there.
Right.
Now, we wouldn't?
We would allow it, I mean...
Or like in a, in industrial park?
Correct.
Or, okay.
Correct.
All right. To the board, does anyone have any questions on any of these? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn it to the audience. Does anyone wish to, under public comment, to offer any comment? We're good? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. So, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, our role this evening is to offer, I guess, what, which of these we see is, you know, offer a favorable recommendation to the township board for final approval. Is there any, are there any items that are on this list that anyone wishes to, to strike and not offer a positive recommendation for?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Maybe we could do away with the artificial turf ordinance?
Okay, is there support for that?
Support.
Um, is there anyone that's in disagreement of that? Hearing none, I'll, we'll strike that one. Are there any other items anyone has issue with? Seeing none, do we have a motion? So I guess, do I have a motion to offer a positive recommendation on the remaining items?
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Chair of the CHS. Okay. Uh, next item is election of officers. So we have a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. First, I'll open the floor for nominations for chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I nominate Jerry Moffett for chair.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess...
Do you accept?
I accept.
Okay.
Is there, yeah, a vote by acclamation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to nominate Mr. Philip Turner to vice chairman.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. You accept the nomination?
Sure.
Are there any, any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
Support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll, I'll call for a vote by acclamation for Phil Turner for vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then finally, for secretary, are there, is there a nomination?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I nominate Raquel Moore for secretary.
Second.
It's been moved, moved and supported. Do you accept the nomination?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, move that the nominations be closed, and that, is there a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I call for a, a vote by acclamation for Raquel Moore for secretary.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Planning Director's report.
All right, one item...
Can vote you out, so.
Okay, one item, it is for the area of Shelby, they are proposing a privacy fence on the east property line between the commercial building to the east and, and their property. They're proposing the six-foot high privacy fence, this would be a modification to their,